I'll just plead with order. Your thanks, with your leaders in prayer.
I will. Dear heavenly fathers, we come to you today with a reaching everyone that's here, Lord, to day return home safe, just like they showed up here. Lord, we just pray for all our veterans and people serving and that have served, Lord, we just pray that you bless them, Lord, and tell them how much we appreciate them. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you. And I recognize a special veteran we have in our audience, Ronnie Hopper, God's brother here. Good say, sir. Thank you, just good to see you, thank you. Ms. Pyer, I'll get you the lead, please, to replace.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doug Vickers.
President.
Sonny Hall. Phil Melton. Rochelle Hill.
Here.
Phil Key. Roseanne Ward. Darryl Hicks.
Here.
Ronnie Hopper. Mary Powers. Annie Hearn. Don Cutten. Dana Ferguson. Kenneth Miller. Rocky Preston. Kalia Dye. Norman Frazier. Eric Burr. Ward Plant.
We have a pardon. Loses a line out of five. The proof of the agenda in a motion. Motion for Dana Ferguson. Second, Mr. Patton. A voice move, all favors say aye. No, no one, thank you. Would somebody pass to any citizen for? Mr. Gary Masterson.
Well, I guess I'm here to bits a little bit and put forth a little idea to, uh, to get some stops where we're putting those from every minute in this county. And I had a talk to TWRAs. I want, I wanted to be, they don't get the damn what I say, excuse my language. But there was some other thing that I was going to talk about that I found out is one of them's coming up on their resolution. The other one, I found out a little bit more, there was a room, I called a room, I posted on Facebook about it. And so I was just like a little bit about, since I couldn't come up with anything else, I was just like about one of the, waste man, uh, waste management board members. So that brings me to, I'm not going to talk about that. So what I am going to talk about, she brought me an idea, that's when she told me all this, when I found out about all this. What we need to have is we need to have somebody to put all this out before the mission meeting in Bible and the latest times for people can see it. Because these two items, I did not, I did not get any information about one of, one of those phone systems. And I was going to get on you about that because Ms. Evans is having to use her, her telephone, which she shouldn't have to, because she has been gracious to talk to some veterans on her phone and her number has got passed around. But that's on purpose. Uh, let's see about that, okay. That, but to get somebody to post all this stuff on our county website, so everybody knows. That's one reason people don't come. Because they don't know they get a year, and it's wrong or something, I didn't like that, I didn't know about this.
What's next?
How about I do that? Okay. A good way to, to stop losing some revenue is that we are losing. And I know that first thing. Uh, I talked about the lake for, for years, I, I sit back down that lake and I see, I saw it go down and go down every year. More than four years, so while we've gotten down. We have lost millions of dollars, all, all counties up and down the lake in the state has lost millions of dollars on account in action. And you can tell anybody you want to, I'm scared. He could have gone in and said, that's nothing, oh, I'm not guessing. But I do know, I'm dead on here. And I do know, if I sit down there on that lake, that's where my, where my up there is, so that's on top of it. And over the years, the amount of, uh, gunshots a year shooting, that, that number has gone down and down too. Same way with our deer hunting, we got, I've got people in houses coming there around me. So not only different county here, in Tennessee, but out of state that come to deer hunting. Guess what? The cause that TWRAs have got a ridiculous, ridiculous bad rhythm on our no deer. And a lot of you, a lot of you probably doesn't know, but you'll get a, you'll get a, get a TWRA book and look at this, the bad rhythm. No deer. Now, let me, let me rephrase that, adverse deer. Because that takes a year. You're little deer and people will shoot. And that's what Rob said a lot of books. But one person is allowed to kill three dogs a year, a, a day. For the whole season, start with most season, very, I figured that out, that's a hundred and thirty-three dogs, the number of deer. So what's going to happen? Now, they, they want to say that that's, uh, to make, so you can get a better quality of, of, better, bigger bucks. I don't mind that. You come out of my walking, I got six of, of wild and young in my back there, we don't shoot those, I haven't killed a dog in my property in four or five years. And don't like them, I'd kill them. For that reason. But I still don't have to, some do, some don't. But I, we've got big, big dealers there. So when you, when you take all this, all, when you, when you think, when people come in and can't kill a deer, just like they can't catch fish, fish, probably move them to, guess what? They're not going to come, they're going to look somewhere else, same with duck hunting. I do know, I had, had friends that rented out a trailer during duck hunting. And guys coming in down here to hunt down big game fodder. Something more. And I used, I used to sit there and sound like a war was going on, where I, where I sit, I could hear, I could hear all of them down the lake. I could hear, I could hear, I could, it was so, it was so, so many that I could hear big game fodder, except in my deer stand. So, you know, what we need to do, if we need to get those TWRAs, uh, and I can't do it long. Another thing we need to have in there that'll bring in more revenue, uh, they, they are all kinds of things, well, we need, we need to get, we need to get young people in the field, we need to get more women in the field. We need to keep our seniors in the field longer. That's what they do. First two weeks, the best two weeks of the season is mudloader season. How many women can, can both manage one of these mudlovers, very few. It, it gets hard for me, my dad comes up to me, he's eighty, hey, he comes hunting. The last three hunting, you know, and that, that, he come the first two weeks, because that was the best, best two weeks. People all out of state life, three hundred bucks to do it. The last three hunting, you know, what he has to be after shelling his mudloader the first time to reload it? Get the ball started, then he has to take the ramrod and get up against the tree and put his weight against the tree to load it. How many kids, how many kids are you going, you going to send down there with mudlovers? They can't load. And they may, they may make a big mistake and hold them and blow the gun. Now, if you change that season at mudloader season toward the end, then you'll be able to get kids, more kids, more women in the field. Your older people can stand, stay in the field longer because they can, they can both, both remember, bottom side question without any trouble. And that would bring in quite more revenue. So what I'm saying to you, as a commission and as mayor and such, let's get together and, and maybe even talk with our representative, which I am going to talk to Bruce about it. Uh, I don't know much about the students, so, but I've heard, it hasn't been good. But I know Bruce is doing a good job and really trying, and I think that's what I want to, I'm going to talk to him about it. But the more people we can get pushing on the TWRAs, that, that's put the pressure on. I wish, I wish, we're not going to have any duck hunting. We're not going to have any deer hunting. And I mean, that's just the way it is.
Thank you very much, Mr. McQuarrie. Thank you, consideration.
These other two I'll wait on. He, he probably, he, he sprayed it once. And I, 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 I put it on Facebook just like, just like I, uh, I heard it, because I did not have the information I needed to make a decision on it. Because I, I, I put it on there as rumored, because to me, that's what it was. One other thing I, I did want to say on here, uh, I want to thank everybody that pushed, pitched in and not heard those. How it's done.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Bruce, thank you, thank you. Mr. Arnie Stickers.
I'm in blue, my name is Arnie Stickers, I'm your former, your own animal control officer. And I'm here to talk to you about position of animal control officer. Last shelter board meeting, we talked to ACO, come in again, everybody agreed at the meeting that the job needs to be done. Everyone also agreed we don't know how we're going to fund it. At the last commission meeting, some questions arose during the discussion of the agenda item, meant to partially fund an ACO for the remainder of fiscal year specifically, isn't there already a line item for that? The answer is no. The two current line items to fund, fund three part-time positions for daily operations of the shelter and one full-time position to manage the operations. Currently through the night a line item dedicated to animal control officer. After that meeting, I attended the following budget meeting to get a more complete picture of the budget for the county and a clear understanding of the financial opposition raised by some people. I believe that's the clarity on competing interests of the county. And with that said, it's a tough decision not to fund your animal control officer. Um, in lieu of other necessities, of course. Without proper funding, however, the function of animal control officer does not perform. We had an stretch in the shelter budget in a attempt, in a successful attempt to fund an ACO. However, eventually, Paul will come looking for what Peters and Robin brought in. And I understand the temptation to look at the animal control budget, because that's the way it reads on the line item. And see a dollar amount and say, it can be done. I dare you to tell you, it can't. If you'd like to know more about why, I'll be available and happy to make myself available for any questions in closing. If an ACO position is not funded, the task of an ACO cannot be provided.
Thank you, Mr. Trump. Mr. Mark, Mark.
I'm going to put the stopwatch in. Um, I wanted to come today and talk to the commission, I know you've heard a lot about education savings accounts and vouchers, if you've read the newspaper or watched the news at all, um, you've heard about those. And, and I just wanted to come, obviously, there's different opinions, but I think it's important, as you as county commissioners know, what we've done as a school board and what's happening right now with the state legislation. First of all, in March, the Benton County Board of Education passed a resolution opposing any type of legislation allowing public dollars for private education. Um, obviously, I'm a little partial to this because I'm a twenty-five-year veteran of the Benton County Board of Education. But I will tell you that I feel like I have an obligation to our students and staff for the past five or ten years. Um, they've adjusted to new evaluation and accountability standards, and now our legislation is looking at passing an education savings account or vouchers where there's not near the accountability that our public school teachers are required to meet in our public school students. So obviously, I'm against any public dollars going to private education. As I told Senator Stevens today in a text, I have personal friends that have chosen to homeschool their students and send their students to private school, and I absolutely have no problem with that, but I do have a problem with private dollars being used with, for private education through public funds. Um, the current legislation that's going through, you will hear that it's only going to affect five counties, and those are obviously the four metropolitans in Madison County. And they have the two schools with the ten percent low performance schools. What you don't hear is you could have the top performing school in the state being Davidson County, and this parent that qualifies for this education savings account could take their child out of that top performing school and still get that education savings account. It's not just those low performing schools, it's any school in that district. So you're going to hear it's not going to affect Benton County. Um, I'm here to tell you I disagree with that. When we, um, when we start taking public dollars and using them for private education, just like this year, if they pass, it's twenty-five million dollars, well, that's twenty-five million dollars that could be going to our public schools. Um, so I just, I'm here to encourage you as commissioners that if, um, if you have any questions about these education savings accounts or vouchers, feel free to call me. I would also encourage you to reach out to Representative Griffey and Senator Stevens, and they are more than willing to listen. Um, and I also just want to close with, I can't tell you how much I appreciate Representative Griffey. Um, he has come to my office on a couple of times. Um, I understand there's, there's a lot of pressure in Nashville, but he is listening. And I'm telling you as a commissioner that if you have concerns about that, or if you're in favor, if you're in favor, I wish you'd come see me before, but I understand that I'm not here politically. You can look across the lines, there's Republicans and Democrats for and against, but I just think you need to know as a commission that if these education savings accounts are approved, it may not be this year, but you know how tough the budget is right now. And if we just have three kids leave Benton County or go to a private school, you know, that seventy-three hundred dollars may not seem like a much, but if we have twenty kids that leave across the county, well, we can't just say we've lost twenty kids and we're going to pull a teacher out, it doesn't work that way. So I just felt like as director of schools that I needed to come and, and just give you a brief summary of education savings accounts. Um, there's, um, it's, obviously, I've been to Nashville three times in the last two weeks, it's important to me. But I would encourage you to call me, or if you have any questions, just come out of the office, and I appreciate all you do. I'll be back in just a few minutes to put a program on for Ms. Hudson that she put together for you.
Mark, is that the same as on it, is that seventy-three hundred per child, per person?
Yes, that is the current legislation. Now, there's a lot of amendments to it, Mr. Plant, the House version is a limit of fifteen thousand students, the Senate version is a limit of thirty thousand. The Senate version also includes homeschool students, which the House took homeschool out. So there's still a lot of, matter of fact, I talked to Representative Griffey earlier today, and I think they were, they were working somewhat on some amendments this afternoon, so it's ever-changing.
A person doing homebound, got two children, they're homebound, it don't affect them, they, they don't get that.
You're talking home school?
Oh, homebound person at home, parents are teaching the kids.
Home school, the Senate version does. Now, they do have to meet an income, it's about sixty-five thousand a year is the income that would qualify for that. The Senate version does include homeschool, the House version does not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, appreciate that. Anything further from the citizen, I'm sorry, if not, loser approved, minutes, commissioner.
Mr. [inaudible].
Oh, I missed your commitment, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm.
You want me to hold that for you?
Yeah, I'm trying to learn and see how you turn, they need a waist, oh, I might have committed a shame, hold on. Go ahead, Miss, Dana.
I'm Dana Ferguson from District Second. What I want to say is what I'm going to elaborate on what was brought up last meeting, that I was accused of breaking the sunshine law, and I talked and found out, and no, I did not do that. We did just exactly what we were supposed to do. I'm leaving it at that.
Thank you, Miss, anything further on commissioners? Mr. [inaudible].
You're fifth district. Um, I was at the insurance committee when you said that you had spoken with Mr. Curtis. I mean, that's water under the bridge, but immediately following last month's meeting, as I was exiting the building, a citizen came up and said she was so glad I brought that up because as she was coming up the steps to come to last month's meeting, there's a group of commissioners over by the small courtroom, and she could clearly hear one commissioner say, well, someone's going to have to make a motion to postpone that, we can't let that happen. So I am glad I brought it up, I do not call commissioners out to vilify anybody here. I'm calling us out because I want to change our collective behavior, that's all. So let's ask ourselves this, what would be the negative impact on the citizens of this county if we don't deliberate outside of meetings? What, what harm would it do to citizens who are ready for us to actually follow these rules? I'll be exchanging information with the commissioner and I'll say, you know what, I think we're getting close to deliberating. I'm not accusing that commissioner, I'm just policing myself. And I think if we all just make a small effort to think, am I just giving each other information or reaction to liberating? We can do it in our committee meetings, we can do it here, that's, that's where we should. So I'm not trying to vilify anybody, but I am going to continue to call it out when it's, it's brought to my attention because I think it's the right thing to do, and that's all I'm doing, thank you.
Anything further? Nothing further? Losers line item eight, approval of a minute. This is my name, got a motion, we take it.
Second.
There we go. All in favor?
Aye.
No, thank you. Losers line item number nine, report a public utility, in motion. Dana, Chris Patton, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Line item ten. They want to put a whole look, go back, would you like that minute to?
Okay.
In the paper, I won't give you any. Go ahead, Miss, lady.
First of all, I apologize in advance, this is a little lengthy, but I want to address each concern that was shared, as well as address, I guess you'd say, the one issue that wasn't shared. Uh, but as Mr. Masterson, on your, uh, you know, concern about public viewing of, of documents and all that, we have an IT director. Uh, it's a slow process, but our website right now doesn't hold the capacity for uploading files, but our, I guess you'd say, our end goal that we're trying to achieve is to get our website up to a point where everything's going to be published beforehand, so it's a good, excellent subject, it's a needed thing for the community. And our IT director's right over here in the corner, so it was good that he heard that concern, but we're, we're definitely working on that. And it's, uh, something that, uh, it's going to be of great benefit to the community. You talked about TWRA, we could probably talk for hours upon hours. You know, any, any resident of Benton County knows that, you know, hunting and fishing is big tourism for our county. And just want you to know that I have contacted at least nine or ten members of TWRA, they will be coming in this summer. Uh, I've asked area sportsmen to begin making the list, we will tour all of the WMA sites, uh, boat ramps, things of that nature. I've got you on the list to invite so that you can go around us on that day, because you've always been someone who has offered great ideas. And so I would like to have you, when we make that tour, uh, uh, I want you with us if you can make it, because I think you, you offered some good suggestions. Mr. Vickers, uh, you know, a concern that I have, you know, it's the same as yours. Uh, I believe this county needs a full-time ACO, but at the very minimum, we need a couple of part-time ACOs, that's a, that's a needed position for this county. Uh, you know, we're still in the budget discussions, uh, I'm disappointed that we continue to raise our waste management monies to their fullest extent, and we don't fund things like a, a full-time ACO. But we've got two months left in the budget process, so there's still some hope that maybe we can, uh, uh, work a, a good solution to that. Uh, Mr. Florence, you know, brought up the subject of vouchers, we know that that is an extremely complex subject. I'll tell you right now personally, I, I support vouchers. And I think there's multiple reasons that have to do either with academics or what's being taught in our public schools or what our children are being exposed to. There's a reason there's vouchers, uh, have been so public. But I will also say that I'm against vouchers when it comes to rural schools. Uh, the rural communities are, would be greatly hurt by, uh, the institution of vouchers in its community. The rural communities are not prepared financially to handle a loss of our student body. I support the resolution, I believe this commission supports the resolution that we passed previously, and we will continue to stand by that. And I also stand by Representative Griffey's stance on this as well, I thought he did an excellent job and explained his position on it. I commend him on that and support him as well. Uh, now, you know, the issue that wasn't brought up that I wish to bring up because I'm, I'm, I'm getting to the point, uh, we've had enough rumor and innuendo circulating around this county, well, I'm about to address it. And Mr. Masterson, Masterson, you know, you know that I've always been open with you, and I, I, I'm an open door, you're welcome to come in and express your concern. Uh, again, I believe we share that same concern, but I've heard the claim, you know, the mayor's trying to zone over the past weekend, and nothing is further from the truth. The basic premise of such rumors solely resides with a resident of multiple locations who sparsely resides on occasion in Benton County and somehow believes unless he proclaims what is right, then everyone else must be wrong. Not one single item on this agenda relates to anything related to zoning, not one. And if it ever did, it would only be related to an industrial development requirement and have to go through multiple public meetings at that. The county has no interest in zoning, and it is something I personally am opposed to, for I stood in this very room a while back and resisted the floodplain adoption zoning proposal because I believed it to have a negative impact on the citizens of Benton County. Still, this unnamed individual and sparse-time resident of our county still believes in purposely creating rumor and public panic for his own ego and personal motives to keep this county in the past. Well, I ran against our past behaviors as a government, and I wish to move the county forward. Citizens of Benton County, we have a great litter, waste, blight, and illegal dumping problem in our county. If you don't believe it, then all you have to do is get out and drive around. I've been very public in my desire and efforts to address this great problem. It has absolutely nothing to do with zoning, but rather simply enforcing the laws granted to us from the state of Tennessee. There are over six sections of Tennessee code entitling that allow us this privilege. TCHs five, six, thirteen, thirty-nine, fifty-five, and sixty-eight, all, uh, address the issue of my concern. No zoning is needed, we just need to enforce the laws already at our disposal. I think I've heard the same thing when it comes to our immigration issues we see in the news. If you're not breaking any law already in existence, you really have nothing to worry about. To sit and say I can do what I want, any way I want, anytime I want, when it comes to creating an illegal dump and trash heaps with no regard to the health and environmental hazards of potential citizens is, I believe, careless and wrong. I am astonished that these same folks will complain about EWS or waste management and their threat to our citizens, yet ignore their own trash heaps and dumps. Now, if you're not creating a dump set, dump site of trash and waste or who knows what, then you really don't have any worries, do you? So to the unnamed individuals, and I'll make that plural, who desire to constantly create division and public panic through false claims, innuendo, gossip, and rumor, and who oftentimes professing judgment upon those who disagree, I would suggest the Bible has over thirty-two verses related to purposely spreading the Australian gossip. And one such verse in this Bible is quoted from ironically, the Book of James, chapter one, verse. The Book of James, chapter one, verse twenty-six, and it's been at least a weekend. Those who consider themselves religious and you, and yet do not keep a tight grain on their tongues to see themselves and their religion as worthless. Thank you for letting me address the Bible.
Thank you. Moves line item ten. It's picking the national children, mental health awareness day, proclamation.
As all know, I'm, I've, I've been a mayor that believes in the public record and the historical record at that. And so, uh, this month is National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. There's a proclamation that I signed earlier, uh, this month, uh, basically instituting that in Bitten County. I wish to read this for the record, it's important to get this in our memory. Whereas addressing the complex mental health needs of children, youth, young adults, and families today is fundamental, is fundamental of Bitten County and whereas the need for comprehensive coordinated mental health services for children, youth, young adults, and families place upon our community a critical responsibility. And whereas it is appropriate that a day should be set apart each year for the direction of our thoughts toward our children's mental health and well-being. Whereas Tennessee voices for children, though its unique approach to certain children and adolescents effectively caring for the mental health needs of children, youth, young adults, and families in our community. Now therefore be resolved that I, Mayor Brett Lashley of Bitten County, to hereby proclaim May sixth, two thousand nineteen, as Children's Mental Health Awareness Day in the area of Bitten County and urge our citizens and all agencies and organizations interested in meeting every child's mental health needs to unite on that day in the observance of such exercises as will acquaint the people of our area, city, county of Bitten, with the fundamental necessity of a year-round program for children, youth, young adults, mental health needs, and their families.
Thank you, Mr. President. Line item eleven, Mr. Mark Florence. Cameron Hudson, student presentation.
I'm not Karen Hudson, sorry. Mrs. Karen does an excellent job with our family involvement and she called and each time this year we try to, um, have recognition of the commissioner. So she made a video with some teachers and some kids and just to tell you how much, uh, we appreciate what you do and things that we have at the school. So, uh, we watched this this morning, it's probably three or four minutes, but, uh, I hope you'll watch it and enjoy. And again, thanks to Karen and the teachers and the students for, uh, making this. Scott, thank you for taking care of the computer and the litter.
We are proud of our students at CHS and know they are in good hands because
Our faculty and teachers give us the chances to make real connections with real people that will help us in our career and personal lives.
The staff cares about us, tell us no bullying and our concern may be.
Lots of our team have opportunities that have a purpose for awarding rubber which includes ethics, abilities, and goals.
Our teachers put our students first and always remind us that they love us.
We love CHS.
Oh, and hashtag lion pride CHS.
We're in good hands at Holiday School because we get trade novels.
This is wonder, main characters are Augie, Summer, Jack Will, and Julian.
That's the problem is August gets my photo because of his cleft lip and his messed up nose. He has one friend named Summer and she eats on his name within his hand. Tell other people it's not nice to make fun of him because he's different.
We will follow our school.
We're in good hands at the church because we are encouraged to be creative.
Here are the screens from all the students taking drawings and drawing designs and painting.
We get to be creative with the baby.
Okay, so you got like four walls, put, uh, string next to it and you put tape over it. And you do a lot of open and erasing and like, yeah, like that. And you just go away and you can do a lot of more that. If it gets a void, you just start pushing down, don't push it all the way down.
Make sure all of them are in the frame.
Now, if you want it to be closer here, what can you do? Just push it on down with the wheel timing up. And if you slip.
So we also made some tin foil art, so we took some cardboard and we glued some string on it and then we, uh, took some tin foil and wrapped it over the cardboard with the string and then we, um, kinda like embossed it down to where it's poking up. And then we took some Sharpies and colored it in to make some like pretty tin foil art. And this one is a different one, but we did the same thing.
We are in good hands at this candy store because Miss Deborah teaches us.
How to be amazing students and further our careers by learning mathematical facts.
How to work our angles by third degrees, right, acute, obtuse, straight.
How to classify shapes based on their properties.
Hello, text, place, and bed.
Practicing division on i itself helps mirror matter how to do it.
Miss Deborah also taught us how to convert decimals to fractions and laboring helped me show my.
That being about teachers and just about teaching us, but it's about helping us with our cares.
And telling you to find common denominators before adding or subtracting fractions.
How to spread kindness and knowledge.
Rounding decimals, multiplying decimals, dividing decimals, converting decimals, and being a good person, but not with decimals. Because Miss Deborah teaches us not just decimals, but being a great teacher also.
When you add and subtract decimals, you better learn like your decimals.
She also, she also teaches that how to solve life, life problems and you can compare fractions by using the same.
The bigger the denominator, the smaller the denominator.
You better behave.
Well, you're in good hands at the Career and Technical Center.
Well, I'm responsible for my career.
One way you learn is through the computerized rural care bed program.
It just expands the strength of parenting skills well as never speak.
Uh, we have different types of babies right here. We have from a drug baby to a shaken baby. Uh, each baby is computerized for twenty-four hours all weekend and you use a bracelet to chime it to make it stop crying or, um, it'll cool when it's done.
Um, this is the shaken baby. It shows like how if you shake a newborn or a new kid, like their brain is a lot softer than ours and like if this can move, it can damage the brain, it can cause death or lots of broken things.
Um, each baby is different, it can cry from ten minutes to twenty minutes each time. Uh, it can go from one o'clock in the morning to five o'clock in the evening, it doesn't matter. And as long as you chime it, you'll get that, that care done. But if not, it'll be on a sheet of paper to show you what you missed and what you didn't miss.
And for all these reasons, we say thank you.
Miss Mary, my name, I got something in this box for you.
Oh, Miss Cheryl, I've got something for you.
Oh, Mr. Sam, we got something for you.
Guess what, Gerald, I've got something in here for you.
Guess what, Miss Angie, I've got something for you.
Guess what, Miss Mary, I have a surprise for you in here.
Mr. Sunny, I got something inside this box for you.
Mr. Shell, I've got something in this box for you.
I have a surprise for you, Mr. Phil.
Mr. Doug, we got a surprise for you in this box.
I have a surprise for you, Mr. Ronnie.
We have a surprise for you, Mr. Don.
We have a surprise for you, Mr. Epp.
I have a surprise for you in here, Miss Clea.
We have a surprise for you, Miss Verkated.
I have a surprise for you, Mr. Moon.
I missed, uh, present for you.
I missed the whole, we got something in here for you.
And from one mayor to another, you too have something in this box. Brett Lashley, our awesome leader, Mark Florence, has it for you now. Take it away, Mr. Florence.
If you wouldn't boss these, I'd have to. No. The mayor didn't know if that had anything to do with the budget, everybody did help, but, oh, seriously. On behalf of the students, uh, there's a lot of good things going on at our schools, that stuff, thanks to Miss Karen for putting that together. But I've told you a hundred times, I know some of you have grandchildren and you do it, but I encourage you to come to our schools and eat lunch, it's, uh, three dollars. Uh, if you'll call me, I'll be glad to meet you and we'll eat. And can't eat lunch for three dollars, I think Mr. Fur will tell you it's not bad. And, uh, and that gives you an opportunity to come out and visit our school, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moves line item twelve, resolution appointing new Bitten County Care Board for three-year term that expires April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Motion. Second. Second. Prayer.
Prayer, motion. Second. Second. I'm gonna read these off and then I'll nation the global. Whereas the county care board has recent vacancies that will need to be filled. And whereas in the, as the chairman's recommendation to appoint and follow to the care board for three-year term sets expire on April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Tracy Hightower, Sunny Hall, Gary Ferner, Tripp Paylon, and Mike Dunn. Now therefore resolve with this board commissioners of Bitten County, Tennessee Assembly Regular Session, fifteenth day, April twenty-nineteenth. These here listed above, be appointed to the Bitten County Care Board for three-year term, sets expire April fifteenth. That be done with the voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, I'm carried, thank you. Care board passed. Moves line item thirteen, resolution appointing three new members to the Joint Economic Development Board a three-year term, sets expire April fifteenth, the twenty-second. Need a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
First, second. I'll read this to you here, whereas the Bitten County Joint Economic Development Board has recent vacancies that will need to be filled. And whereas it is the chairman's recommendation to appoint and follow to the Joint Economic Development Board three-year term sets expire on April fifteen, two thousand twenty-two. Jill, Melissie, Alau, Linda, Zanetti, Kathy Hoot. Therefore, therefore be resolved with the Board of Commissioners of Bitten County, Tennessee Assembly Regular Session, fifteenth day of April twenty-nineteenth. That these listed above be appointed to the Joint Economic Development Board for a three-year term sets expire April fifteen, two thousand twenty-two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, I'm carried, for the field. Line item fourteen. This is resolution appointing Greg Piper as the Bitten County Safety Officer, Natasha represented. Need a motion?
Second. Second prayer.
First. This here is the Bitten County Dean of Natasha Safety Officer. And whereas it's the mayor's recommendation that Greg Piper, county maintenance, be appointed to fill this position. Whereas the county safety office received a quarterly payment in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars for the job. And whereas Greg Piper would be appointed to the Bitten County Safety Officer beginning April fifteen, twenty-nineteenth and until further notice. Now therefore be resolved with the Board of Commissioners of Bitten County, Assembly of the Regular Session, fifteenth day of April twenty-nineteenth that the county employee, Greg Piper, assume the role of Bitten County Safety Officer in order to keep the county doctor, complain for additional pay of two fifty per quarter beginning April fifteen until further notice.
Approved by property.
Approved by property, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, I'm carried, appointed. Thank you very much. Resolution fifteen. Resolution fifteen. Budget of the public safety grant within the school budget.
Motion.
Motion, Miss Dana?
Second.
Miss Angie, second. Whereas the expenditure were not enough to meet the necessary expenditure of certain subjects or items of the primary series of the school budget. Therefore resolved, County Board Education to approve the fallen change within the twenty-eighteen. Six thousand seven fifty, increased revenue to expenditure, other supply of materials, six thousand seven hundred and fifty.
It was recommended by budget.
Recommended by budget. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, no, I was carried, resolution passed. Line item sixteen, resolution budget is the ready to be ready summer grant within the school budget. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second, Kenny Miller. Is everybody got this copy, Colonel? You have my, just gonna ask you.
It was recommended by budget.
By budget, thank you. Increase revenue there. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, no, I was carried, resolution passed. Seventeenth, line item, resolution budget funded in the amount of two, excuse me, of one thousand two hundred and eighty-nine within the animal shelter budget.
Motion.
It's not by Patton, second, a Sunny Hall.
This was recommended by law enforcement.
Recommended by law enforcement.
It was recommended by budget.
By budget, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, all eyes carried, resolution passed. Line item seventeen.
Thank you.
Listen, eighteen, I'm sorry. Eighteen, resolution budget funded in the amount of eight thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars forty-eight within the sheriff's budget.
Motion.
Motion by Dana Ferguson.
Sorry.
Second by Sunny Hall.
This was recommended by law enforcement.
It was recommended by budget.
And budget. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, no, I was carried, huge. Line item nineteen, resolution budget funded in the amount of one thousand ninety-eight dollars thirty-four cents within the library budget.
Motion.
Motion by Dana. Second by Sunny Hall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, no, I was carried, resolution passed. Twenty, line item, resolution budget ROI being received in the amount of three hundred and seventy-five dollars within the county coroner's budget. Motion by Dana Ferguson. Second by Sunny Hall.
Recommended by budget.
Recommended by budget. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, no, I was carried, passed. Twenty-one, resolution budget, budget funded in the amount of seven hundred and ninety-seven eighty-five cents within the registered deeds budget.
Motion.
Motion Dana.
Second.
Second by Mr. Patton.
It was recommended by budget.
Recommended by budget, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, no, I was carried, resolution passed. Line item twenty-two. Resolution transfer of funds in the amount of one hundred and ninety-nine dollars within the veterans' service. Motion by Dana.
Second.
Second by Miss Dana.
It was recommended by budget.
By budget. You broke a law, that's.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Phil Key?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Daryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Kern?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston? Sorry. Leah Dyke?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Fur?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote?
Motion, Gary.
Motion, Gary, thank you. Moves a line item twenty-three. Resolution transfer of funds in the amount of one thousand six hundred twenty dollars within the school budget. Have a motion by Dana. Second by Patton. Patton, did he, I think he.
It was recommended by budget.
Budget. We have room for this one.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Phil Key?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Daryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Kern?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Leah Dyke?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Fur?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote?
Line item twenty-four. Resolution appropriate funds in the amount of three hundred and forty dollars from the unassigned fund balance within the county general fund. And budgeted within the health department's budget. Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Miss Dana, second by Sunny.
This is new money.
New money.
It wasn't recommended by budget.
Recommended by budget. One of you have room for this.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Phil Key? Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Daryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Kern?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
No.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Leah Dyke?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Fur?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote?
Motion, Gary. Moves a line item twenty-five, resolution appropriate to fund in the amount of four hundred and twenty-five dollars from the unassigned fund balance within the county general funds. And budgeted within the solid waste tar budget.
Motion.
Motion by Dana.
Second.
Second by Sunny Hall. But not budgeted.
It was recommended by budget.
Was recommended by budget. Room call, this one.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Phil Key?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Daryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Kern?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
No.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Leah Dyke?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
No.
Gary Fur?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote?
Motion, Gary. Line item twenty-six. Resolution appropriate funds in the amount of one thousand two hundred dollars of the unassigned fund balance within the county general fund. In order to strip and wax all court floor.
Mr. Chair?
Dana, Mr. Baker.
Uh, wouldn't point out to you.
Did you say?
Show approval of County Mayor Barry Barnett at the bottom, I feel like one of them, trying to figure that out.
Would you say that again?
Yes, sir. On the resolution there, it shows in the left-hand column, at the bottom, it shows approval of County Mayor Barry Barnett.
Are you two people that time? There you go. We'll get that done. We'll change him. Yes, I have. I need a motion.
A motion.
The motion, who's second? Mr. Hicks?
And I need to make a motion to amend this resolution to say, instead of twelve hundred dollars, it should say two thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Two thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars?
Yes, ma'am. Instead of twelve hundred dollars, it should say two thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Thank you.
In both places.
Who's, who's doing the stripping?
And the original quote was basically just of the open areas that you couldn't get to, but, uh, so we got us a quote too early. But this is the full quote for all offices, the carpet, floors, everything. Uh, I can't remember the last time it's been done. They don't have any buffers or.
What, 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 yeah, why the increase?
Uh, the extra offices that they're gonna do, so they're gonna go into each office, uh, as well.
Who's doing this?
It's, it's a firm out of, uh, Lauderdale County. They do our head start program up here. And so, uh, I said, they take such, such a good job there. And they give us a discounted rate. So, did you, did you have a form?
Did, did, did we have any quotes or anything from anybody else?
Uh, no, I don't, this is expeditious. I mean, I don't wanna wait on to get the quotes with Laura and the party to get behind. Uh, so I made this decision, we're gonna get to them.
Is that comparable to what it would probably cost?
Yeah, I, I did, I know, he, we, he gives us a discounted rate, the same thing he gives our head start program. So, uh, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, so.
The first, first thing you had was a twelve hundred dollar, but that was just to, that wasn't the office. Come back and then finish other, and the budget. I said y'all looked at that hanging on.
No.
The budget, alright?
Yes. What's budget? It was recommended by budget, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Didn't we used to have the inmates come over here and do this?
That's a good question.
At what time would you? Doing all kinds of new money out of this year's budget that we're working on right now, that's getting to the end, can this not wait till next year?
It's possible. It is possible, but here's thing, we're already probably years behind on this. I don't, I can't remember, I've asked, I've questioned the offices, office holders, when the last time their floors were done. I don't know, uh, if Wanda has a better reputation, but I can't remember. I think our floors need it. Uh, he also set us up on a program where he will come back every six months. The initial stripping and waxing and buffing is of course the more expensive endeavor. Uh, but he will come back every six months and service our floors at a much more discounted rate. And I put that in, uh, on each, one on each desk for you to quote. Yeah. This is both the carpet, the, the main atrium floor, and all of our hallways, jewelry room, uh, and county office holder. It probably should've been budgeted, and I think in the past, the sheriff, you know, he's been able to loan us, you know, prisoners or whatever, to maybe come over here and do it. But, you know, time, time has changed with reliability element of that and also convenience element. Not that I wanna put the sheriff on the spot, but I've been asking since October, and, uh, we just haven't been able to free up the, the labor. I don't, I just don't remember us ever doing it, and if we don't have all the equipment, we need to do it. All we have is the buffer, we don't have, we can't do the carpet, you know, we still have the equipment, we don't have the manpower.
I'm gonna go back and do the motion to.
I have, I have a motion to Amanda, just need a second.
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 Second, Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, done first. Do you have the name of that, that title? Miss Wonder, they wrote call over there.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Phil Key?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Daryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Kern?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
No.
Kenneth Miller?
No.
Leah Dyke?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Fur?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion, Gary.
Motion, Gary. Motion around line item twenty-seven.
We need to vote on it, that's what I mean.
Motion as amended.
I've done the motion, it's amended.
As amended, as amended. You don't vote as amended.
Hold on, as amended.
As amended.
That's changing from the new favorite that we put in it. To the better road car.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
That's what I said, you want to do a road car right there.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Phil Key?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Daryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Kern?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
No.
Kenneth Miller?
No.
Leah Dyke?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Fur?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? As amended, Gary.
Motion, Gary.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we take a five-minute recess.
Second.
Second.